I want to call the meeting to order and I want to welcome everyone. This is the 19th, 2020 special call meeting of the City County Planning Commission. And I will ask Ms. Martin, please call and roll.
Yes ma'am. Commissioner Valance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Bataley?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am. All commissioners, you've had a chance to review the summary minutes of the November 5th meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Action. Then I'll ask for a motion, please.
So move.
Second, thank you ma'am.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Thank you.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Bataley?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Runner, I request that you order that record tonight include all statutory and regulatory provisions. The commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket. And the qualifications for each staff witness. Finally, I'd request that you administer those to those witnesses.
Yes, so ordered. You may also tell your people for this commission.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you all. Subdivision and site development plans. Commissioners, any questions on those? No questions? Letters of credit and performance bonds, we do not have any. Nor do we have any unfinished or new business, so we can go right into the public hearing. And our first item tonight is docket number 202013 Flume. Joseph Scott Rippe has filed an application for a future land improvement. On a tract of land containing approximately 5.029 acres. Located at Zero Voice Fairview Road, bounded by Woodburn Allen Springs Road and Antioch Church Road. From agriculture to rural density residential. And also on docket number 202054 Z County, those same applicants have filed to rezone that land from agriculture to residential estate with a general development plan. So we will have the staff report.
Thank you Chair Runner.
Thank you ma'am.
We had a pre-application conference on August 31st for the property you see outlined here in yellow. As Chair Runner has already stated, the applicants are requesting to amend the future land use map from agriculture to rural density residential. And then would like to proceed with a zone change from Ag to RE if that is successful. The, the purpose is to develop the property with a maximum of five single-family residential lots. So you see there the zoning map and then the use map, which has the property as agriculture. This is in the Boys area, so it's mostly agricultural with, with some single-family residential. And then of course, the, the Boys store down there at the corner. And I will leave this up, so we can talk about it if we need to as we go along. The proposed density of this would be .99 dwelling units per acre. I'll just note on the compatibility surrounding development on the first page of your staff report, that a site characteristic review indicates there are adequate facilities and infrastructure available to support the proposed development with an exception noted regarding road width, which we'll get to momentarily. I'm going to go to the second page of the staff report, which has the LU114, the procedures for amending the future land use map. The applicants in a narrative that, that you see there on page two, they actually see the attached development plan conditions filed concurrently. They did supply those development plan conditions with their rezoning application. And the proposed development plan conditions address additional items of compatibility, including minimum square footage for any new home constructed on the property, building materials, building, building orientation, and the front yard setback along Voice Fairview Road, which we'll see in just a second. Under the site characteristics review, I'll just note that setbacks would adhere to the RE standards set forth in the zoning ordinance, except for a 50-foot front yard setback committed to the development plan conditions. Talked about road width just a second ago, Voice Fairview Road is 14 feet wide. Going on to page three, prime farmland, the property contains a soil type that is classified as farmland of statewide importance. Soil suitability, the property contains soil types that are classified as somewhat limited and very limited regarding soil suitability for septic tank absorption fields. Moving on to the site design and compatibility review. Under surrounding density, the proposed density of the development, as I've already said, is .99 dwelling units per acre. Within a fourth mile densities range from zero to 1.43 dwelling units per acre, with a median density of 0.2 dwelling units per acre and an average density of 0.4 dwelling units per acre. Within a half mile densities range from zero to 1.43 dwelling units per acre, with a median density of 0.29 dwelling units per acre and an average density of 0.44 dwelling units per acre. This body should consider if the proposed density for this development is compatible with existing densities in the surrounding area. Going on down to surrounding architectural features. Existing residences in the area are one-story. There are also taller agricultural buildings in the vicinity. Home sizes range from 1,304 square feet to 3,187 square feet. Median home size, 1,627 square feet. Average home size, 1,825 square feet. Majority of these homes have an attached two-car garage. Building permits have also been applied for, for two of the lots resulting from the recent auction located at 3517 and 3553 Voice Fairview Road. Proposed home sizes are 1,882 square feet and 2,077 square feet respectively. Building materials of the eight existing residences along Voice Fairview Road between Antioch Church Road and Woodburn Allen Springs Road, there are three homes constructed of brick and three homes of vinyl. Another home is a mixture of stone and vinyl, another is primarily brick and stone with vinyl used as an accent. Majority of homes have a brick or stone foundation, with a couple of homes having split face block foundations. Accessory structures and agricultural structures are a mixture of metal, wood, and vinyl, and the Boys General Store is metal. I'll go on now to the development plan conditions. There are seven of those. Number one, no manufactured homes will be permitted on the property. Number two, any new residence constructed on the property will contain a minimum of 1,500 square feet of conditioned living space and shall contain a minimum of a two-car attached garage. Number three, each residence shall be constructed of brick, vinyl, concrete siding, or stone. No visible plain face block foundations will be permitted. Number four, any new lot shall obtain a site evaluation from the Barron River District Health Department prior to recordation of the plat. Number five, the property shall be limited to a maximum of five access points to Voice Fairview Road to be coordinated with and approved by the Warren County Public Works Department. Number six, residences constructed on the property will have a front facade oriented toward Voice Fairview Road. And number seven, the front building setback for all lots shall be a minimum of 50 feet. Focus 2030 category review, there are 14 items listed there, four of which comply, and 10 of which are left up to your determination. Those are LU111 and LU112, that it may comply with the flume and with those items that seem compatible with the surrounding area. The flume amendment to rural density residential is approved. And also if the planning commission determines that the proposal complies with LU113. LU2, this body should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. NCR24, planning commission should determine if the proposed development will preserve the existing agricultural landscape and view shed, and if it will enhance the rural character of the area. NCR241, the property is located on a roadway less than the 18-foot width minimum standard for a road in Warren County. So the planning commission should determine compliance with that item and whether or not the proposed lots will result in an increased amount of development pressure on the countryside. LU29 and NCR25, planning commission should determine if the proposed RE lots will promote the vitality of the existing rural landscape and if the proposal is engaging with the character of the Boys community. And HN21, HN4, planning commission should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type, and if the proposed residences are believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. I'll go back to page one of your staff report where there are four points to consider. The subject property is one of eight lots subdivided from 41 acres resulting from a recent auction. The planning commission should consider if a flume amendment to create five additional lots in the proposed location is appropriate for this area of Warren County and the Boys community. And further consider if the argument provided by the applicants to amend the flume meets the criteria outlined in LU114 of the comprehensive plan. If the flume amendment is approved, the proposal would be consistent with the flume and the rural density residential category. The proposed development complies with a majority of the site characteristics review criteria with considerations noted regarding road width. The proposed general development plan complies with a majority of the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. And compatibility of the proposed development, including the proposed density, should be determined by this body. So that is all I have for the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you ma'am. Do we have any questions for Ms. Ramsey from the commissioners?
Monica, Tim Graham here. I think I understood you to say that two building permits had been applied for as a result of the auction, and one of them was approximately 1,000 square feet, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Well, well, I guess 1,882 square feet and then 2,077 square feet.
Aha, 1,882, okay, very good, thank you.
Closer to, closer to 2,000, I guess.
Got it, okay. And the minimum square foot is proposed here is 1,500 square feet, is that correct?
That is correct, yes sir.
Alright, thank you.
Were the two permits part of these two lots?
Uh, I, I do not believe so.
Do we have any other questions from the commissioners?
Do we know if the applicant has talked to the road department yet?
I, I'm not sure Commissioner Clark, that might be a question for the, the applicants. I haven't looked on here to see if they're here, but I, I would hope they are present.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Any other questions we can hear from the applicants?
Can, can you hear it?
Yes.
Yes ma'am, we have talked to the road department, and they said they would work with us and they would make it work.
I apologize, I apologize. This is John Runner. I, I need to get your name and address and swear you in.
Okay, no problem. My, my name is John Rippe, and this is my brother Scott Rippe.
And do you swear to tell the truth before this commission?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you, and go, go ahead.
Okay, I was going to say that we did talk to the main guy, the road department. I think his name was Randy, I believe that was his name. And he said that he went out there, looked at it, and he said he would make it work. He said it wouldn't be no problem.
Thank you sir. Do we have, do we have any other questions for Mr. Rippe? Commissioners? Do we have any opposition from anyone online? Anyone with any questions concerning this application?
Madam Chairman, this is Ham.
Yes sir.
I just wanted to clear up. The applicant shown here is Joseph Scott Rippe. And I heard that there was John Rippe and Scott. Are you all related to Joseph Scott Rippe?
Yes sir, that's my brother John. I'm, I'm Joseph Scott, but I go by Scott.
Okay. So, so do you and John own this property together, or just you, Scott?
Well, just me, I'm on the deed.
Okay, alright. I just wanted to make sure we've gotten the property owner correct, and it appears that we have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Do we have any other questions before I call for a motion? No other questions? Then I'll ask for a motion, please, concerning the flume amendment.
Make the motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number 202013 Flume. Based upon testimony, documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed flume amendment has met the directive to amend the flume as outlined in LU114 in the comprehensive plan. Further request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing. Second?
Second.
Thank you, thank you for the second.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Bataley?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am. That motion passed, now we need to act on the zone change request, so I'll ask for that motion.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon a general development plan. Docket number 202054 Z County, based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thanks, thank you sir, we need a second.
Second.
Thank you ma'am.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes ma'am.
Starks?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Bataley?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner? Yes ma'am, the motion carried, so our recommendation will be for approval. Thank you all. The next?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is docket number 202055 Z County. David Downing and John and Cheryl Downing have filed an application to resumetracks of land containing 10.16 acres located at Zero and 382 Long Road from agriculture to RR, which is rural residential with a general development plan. And we'll hear the staff report.
Thank you Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on October the 8th for the properties you just referenced on Long Road. Roughly 10.16 acres is proposed to be rezoned from Ag to RR. Future land use designation for the property is low-density residential, which allows single-family residential development up to four and a half dwelling units per acre. The proposed density for this development is 0.39 dwelling units per acre, which complies with this future land use category. And jump on to the preliminary development plan that was submitted. It shows the four lots that are proposed. And so with that, I'll jump to the layout lot sizes and setback section of the site characteristics review on page two. One thing worth noting is that the applicants have committed in the development plan conditions to maintain at least a 100-foot setback from the front property line. Under wastewater adequacy, we have noted that the existing residence utilizes an onsite septic system. However, the properties are located within 2,000 feet of sewer, and any new residents will be served by sewer. Natural features, we have highlighted that there is a tree line running along the northwestern property line. You can see that on the aerial view, if I jump back to that real quick here. So that's running along the north property line there, or the northwest property line. And then I'm going to jump over to the development plan conditions. There were 10 that were submitted. One, no mobile or manufactured homes. Two, each single-family residence shall have at least 2,200 square feet of living space exclusive of garages. Three, each residence must be constructed of at least 80%, 80% brickstone, ephes or other cementitious or modern masonry materials excluding plain or split face block. Four, plain face and split face blocks shall be prohibited as a vinyl, vinyl visible foundation material. Five, each residence must have a minimum of a two-car garage. Six, any trees with an 8-inch diameter or greater located along the property lines of the subject property are to be preserved, trimming and pruning shall be permitted. The subject property shall have a maximum of four access points on Long Road. Any new access shall be coordinated with and approved by the Warren County Public Works Department. Eight, the subject property shall be limited to a maximum of four lots. Nine is the front yard setback I already touched on. And then 10, any residents will have a front facade oriented to face Long Road. Jumping to page four, which looks at the Focus 2030 category review. Staff evaluated 10 items from the comprehensive plan and found six of those items to be in compliance. There were four that the planning commission should evaluate for compliance, which include LU1.1.3, which looks at compatibility. Next, LU2, which looks at quality of development and character of the area. And last, HN2.1 and HN4, which look at suitability of the development and housing options in the area. Wrapping up the staff report on page one with the points to consider. Again, the request is compliant with the future land use map. The development complies with a majority of the review criteria for the site characteristics and also for site design. And also meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Her. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Rachel, can you share with us why we're doing RR instead of RE when RE is around it?
It's based on the lot size, Commissioner Clark. So all of the proposed lots would be at least two acres in size, and that's the minimum in rural residential.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, commissioners? More questions? Is the applicant present?
Yes ma'am.
Do, is there anything that you would like to add?
No ma'am.
Any questions for the applicant? Do we have anyone in opposition to this request? No questions, no opposition? Then I will ask for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with condition upon a general development plan. Docket number 202055 Z County. Based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you sir, we need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Bataley?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am. Motion carried, our recommendation will be for approval. So thank you. And our last item tonight is docket number 202056ZBG. The Volkan Green Area Economic Development Authority, the Intermodal Transportation Authority, and Nova Steel USA Incorporated have filed an application to resumetracks of land containing approximately 79.06 acres located at Zero and 192 Technology Way and 458 50572 and 630 Glasgow Road from light industrial and heavy industrial, each with general development plans, to heavy industrial with a general development plan. So we will have our staff report now.
Thank you Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on October the 5th for the properties you just mentioned containing 79.05 acres. The request before you this evening proposes to rezone the entire property or development area in red to heavy industrial. The future land use designation for the property is industrial, and therefore this request is also flume compliant. Looking at the site characteristics review section of your staff report, this is the preliminary development plan that was submitted. You can see the proposed layout. One thing I will note, development plan condition 12 requires a minimum setback of 100 feet from a residential use. We've noted that portions of the properties contain mature trees. And then if we move on to the general development plan and development plan conditions on page three, I'm not going to read all of these. There have been a couple of similar applications before you all here recently. And these are very similar to the conditions that were approved with those applications. So I'm just going to touch on each one just with a general topic. And if anyone has any questions about any of the specific conditions, I'll be glad to go back to those as needed. Number one looks at landscaping and buffering. Two, infrastructure, street design, and utility placement. Three prohibits hazardous materials and products. Four, includes screening requirements. Five looks at signage. Six, malodorous emissions and abatement. Seven, interior landscaping requirements. Eight, landscaping of public streets. Nine, access. Ten, stormwater and drainage considerations. Eleven, prohibited uses. Twelve is that setback I just mentioned adjacent to a residential use. Thirteen, cars considerations. Fourteen, location of parking. Fifteen, current residential uses within the boundary of the proposed development. And then moving on to our Focus 2030 category review. Staff evaluated 14 items and found eight of those items to be in compliance. Two were not in compliance, and there were four items that the planning commission should evaluate for compliance. The two that were not in compliance relate to tree preservation or preservation of mature vegetation, and that is LU2.1.4 and NCR1.1.6. The items for the planning commission to consider for compliance include LU1.1.3, which is compatibility. LU2, quality of development and character of the area. And then HN1 and HN1.3, which include character considerations for infill development. So back on page one, we've included our points to consider. Again, the proposal is compliant with the future land use map and industrial category. The proposed development complies with a majority of the site characteristics review criteria and the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And last, compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. And I went through that pretty quick. And again, if there's anything I need to go through in greater detail, I'd be happy to do that. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Her. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Her before we hear from the applicant?
So Rachel, part of the, part of this is already zoned highway, or excuse me, heavy industrial, correct?
Yes sir.
How many of, of the 79 acres, how many, how many were light and heavy before this request?
A vast majority, if I jump back to the zoning ordinance, I can't say off the top of my head with certainty, but almost all, well, if you, actually if you look on page one, the current zoning is all light industrial and heavy industrial.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, so, I mean, all we're really changing is part of it from light to, to just all of it heavy, correct?
Yes, and the reason for including the already existing heavy industrial areas is really, I guess, more of a housekeeping item, so that we don't have seven sets of development plan conditions running through property lines and buildings.
Sure, okay.
Any other questions, commissioners, from Ms. Her? No questions, then we can hear from the applicant.
Good, good evening, Lucas Humble with Bell Warriors and more here for the applicants. Thank you, Ms. Herd and the staff for your thorough and detailed report. I don't have much to add, I think it was well done. I would only add that this is a highly public project. You've probably seen the news, Governor Beshear called it out a few weeks ago in his daily press conference. We're excited to have Nova Steel in town, and this is just one staff and finishing up and getting their project ready. So unless anyone has questions for, for me or for Nova and/or the EDA, we would request that it be approved.
Thank you sir. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? No questions? Do we have any questions or opposition from anyone else online?
This is Robert Page, I've got opposition of it.
Yes, if you would state your name and address for us and I will swear you in and then you can ask your question or make a statement.
Alright, my name is Robert Page, I am the owner of one of the properties out there, my current address is 297 Ren Road in Bowling Green, Kentucky.
And you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Yes sir, you can go ahead and make your statement or ask a question.
Okay, I am the owner of 286 Glasgow Road. My concern is, is basically this is gonna, that's a rental property out there and it's basically gonna kill any use with what they've got proposed of me being able to lease out that property or even sell that property because I feel like, you know, when I've got a loading dock in my front yard and one in my backyard, that's pretty much going to sandwich my house into a wide area of industrial use right now. You know, I've got people growing corn in my backyard, or not my backyard, but my tenants backyard. They've got livestock back there that I'm concerned with and things like that, I believe they're on this call with us. But my main concern is the property values, what it's gonna do to my residential property value up there.
Mr. Page, this is Commissioner Graham, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
If I understand correctly, currently the zoning is already light industrial, are you suggesting that that you want it to say agriculture?
Well, no, I understand that it's already light industrial, but we're talking about, I mean, according to the plans, they're talking about putting another dock or another building right basically in the backyard of my property, I mean, there's gonna be an access road. You know, I don't know how many feet from my property with probably semi trucks, you know, and like I said, my tenants that are there right now, they have livestock out there.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have anyone else online who is in opposition?
Can you hear me?
Yes, if you'd state your name and address please.
My name is Austin Condiv, I am Robert Page's son-in-law, I actually live at the 286 Glasgow Road and I just had a couple of questions as far as like, I'm sorry.
I apologize, I just, you swear to tell the truth before this commission?
Yes ma'am.
There you go, now go ahead and ask your question, thank you.
My questions are basically, I've got a couple of privacy concerns, you know, noise concerns, if anything is in the plans to mitigate those factors. As my father-in-law stated, you know, we have a factory in front of the house, a main road, it's incredibly loud at night and I'm just questioning how that's going to play an effect with the new factory being built there.
I can speak to that, Chair Runner.
Yes ma'am.
I will say, I did just touch briefly on the conditions when I went through the staff report, but there are specific landscaping and buffering considerations that are included with the proposed development along with the minimum buffering requirements from the zoning ordinance when adjacent to a residential use, so there would be some sort of buffering requirement adjacent to your property if this is approved and also under the current development plan for the current light industrial property or the current light industrial zoning that currently exists, both the current and proposed would have buffering requirements.
Thank you ma'am. Do you have any other questions? Do we have anyone else in opposition?
I have a question for staff, when we're doing these development plan conditions, number four talks about loading docks and the the screening around that to protect it from the neighbors and also we made provision for 100 feet from any residential. I didn't know if the applicants were, I mean, not the applicants, but the community that was concerned were aware of those two conditions because the applicants have agreed to those conditions to keep it screened and to keep it 100 feet away. So that does give them some buffering and some privacy there.
Well, just to clarify, the 100 foot setback is only required for a building itself. So you could have a travel way or other things within that 100, it would only be for any building.
Thank you ma'am. Any other questions? Do you have anything that the applicant would like to add before I call for a motion?
No ma'am, we appreciate your support.
Thank you ma'am. Then I'll ask for a motion please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with condition upon a general development plan, document number 202056ZBG, based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and actions items presented in the staff report, therefore the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further request this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you sir, we need a second. Thank you all.
Commissioner Balas?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Hunsell?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Batsaly?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes ma'am, the motion carried, so our recommendation will be for approval, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, that brings us down to discussion items. Mr. Peterson, do you have anything for us?
Just a couple of things real quick, I think all of you are aware of the new COVID restrictions, so what that means for our office. We will close to the public, but all of our operations will continue, so from starting tomorrow with the 20th through December 13th, we will close our office to the public. Surveyors, engineers, applicants can still drop stuff off in person if they need to, they just won't be allowed to come in our suite, they can, there's a table set up outside our door to drop stuff off, otherwise we encourage everybody to do everything they can electronically. Additionally, most all of the staff will be working at home to be in compliance as well, so we'll probably be limited to around five staff in the office. Everybody else will be working remotely, so just wanted to let you all know that. The second thing is, I got an email this week from indicating that the city and the county are gonna move forward on voting on changing of the joint agreement which makes up, you know, describes the makeup of the planning commission. I don't have, you know, what the final version is or what that content is, so I can't really comment on that, but just wanted to pass that along and let you know that that will be coming up in December, so if you have any questions on that, I'll try to answer it, but.
So what does that mean Ben?
Honestly, I don't really know. If you remember, we've had some discussions on this before. In general, I'll just say we would still do joint planning as a community, so if we had to vote on the comprehensive plan or you know, business items or staffing, you know, hiring, firing, discipline would be all the full board, so it'd be all 12 member community. And then the details that I'm not sure of is on zone changes and other applications, what mix of the planning commission that would be, I think the general idea is that it would be more area oriented where if it was, the application was in a certain area, then only certain members would vote on that, but I don't have those details at this time.
See, so this is an extension of that discussion that was had earlier in the year, is that correct?
It's been going off and on for about two years now, but yes, we've discussed different versions on it. I think we're probably on about the fourth or fifth version and we haven't really been consulted honestly since about the third version except for on the outside, so that's why we're kind of unaware what the contents of that agreement actually are. That I might know more tomorrow. Hamp, I don't know if you've got any other insight other than what I just stated.
Well, I think you've described what we know and kind of generally the themes that are trying to be promoted in the process.
Will that be brought to us to talk about or are they making the decision and it's gonna tell us?
It's probably more the latter, it's a legislative decision legislative makes. The planning commission does not have to have any input into that or make any recommendations on that. It's just a joint agreement between those six legislative bodies.
Well, I know that Plum Springs just recently heard about it and called and I know Oakland recently heard about it and not in favor of it, so I was just curious on what you knew about it.
Yeah, the only, I don't know for sure, well, I guess I do know Plum Springs voted on some version of it earlier, I don't know, I mean, I'm sorry, Smiths Grove voted on a version of it earlier and voted it down and I've heard Oakland did as well, but I don't know that firsthand.
Thank you.
Ben, this is Rick Starks, I have a question. Is there any way that the commissioners can see any information related to this proposed change?
Maybe, if you, Hamp, you wanna answer that, we don't have a copy of it, we're not the author of it, so I'm.
Rick, kind of the foundational document upon which the whole planning process is based in this and every county is what's called an inter-local agreement. And that inter-local agreement between the Warren Fiscal Court, the city of Bowling Green, Woodburn, Oakland, Plum Springs and Smiths Grove, those six entities created the joint planning commission that we call the City County Planning Commission. And so that's why, because it is a foundational document that created the planning commission, then of course it is, it is an agreement that is between the legislative bodies and doesn't involve planning commission. So Ben correctly said, we've seen versions of this document, but the planning commission's never been asked to vote on it and they wouldn't be. And when the version is presented to one of those six legislative bodies, we'll then know what that is and we'll, I know Ben or anybody else would be happy to try to circulate that amongst all of you all. And I'm sure it'll be available other sources, other places too.
We can send the current version, the current enacted version that we're operating under and then of course, any proposed we can send, but 2001, I believe is the last time it was amended, but we can send you that version.
Okay, the only reason I ask is from an education standpoint, I know we probably couldn't, wouldn't be going on anything related to that, but from an education perspective, it will help us understand a little bit more about, as soon as we can get as much information as we can get. Thank you.
Sir.
Anything else sir?
That's all I have.
Nothing else, commissioners, anything you want to add? If not.
I'd just like to say, praying for Commissioner Warren's family, that they get better.
Thank you ma'am, we will do that. I'll just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving then and meetings adjourned, thank you all.